Hey, we're rolling.
Okay, it's uh June twenty fourth. Twenty sixth.
Twenty six.
Twenty six?
Twenty twenty four. Seven oh five, we're gonna call the planning board meeting. We stand for that.
United States of America. The Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, do you have some corrections?
Yes, I do. When Chris was doing the minutes, he found that, first of all, correct the date on today's agenda is the twenty sixth, not the twenty fourth, that's the day that I actually put it together. Um, last month, May twenty, uh, May's meeting, on the boundary line adjustment for Montgomery and Smith, on the cover sheet, at the top of the cover sheet, I had put May twenty second, it was May twenty fourth, and but um, later on in the, Chris, I didn't fix this. This is the one that caught this mistake, so let me just look. It it should be the twenty second, and it is on the top of the page, but in the body of it, it should be the twenty fourth, and that and that's what is wrong. So I just wanna correct that. May twenty second was our meeting last month, so on the cover sheet for Montgomery and Smith from last month, there was a mistake, the date at the top of the paper is correct, May twenty second, but in the body of the paper, it um, must be I corrected it, Chris, cuz I've got it right on this.
Can you print out a new one and have John sign it?
So was number three supposed to be twenty four, twenty two?
Not in the minutes.
The date is supposed to be May twenty second, whatever I had wrong was wrong, so we're correcting it, and I've already filed it with the town clerk with the correction, so.
The year was wrong last time.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah, twenty twenty three, not twenty twenty four.
The one at the top is twenty twenty three, see? I have too much going on.
Talking about this sheet.
The cover sheet from the action last month, I had it for a year wrong on the top, it should have been twenty four, and I had twenty three. Okay.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. So we still have a public hearing open for the Evergreen Estates subdivision. Is there anybody in the audience or on Zoom that wishes to speak with public hearing?
We have no Zoom participants.
Okay.
Hearing none from the audience? I'm working on it.
That's okay.
I'm gonna try to give you another one.
Alright, so Evergreen Estates is now up to the podium. You need a microphone or? Oh, it's okay.
I'll try to do this here. Good evening. I'm Eric Sandblum from SRA Engineers, representing the applicant. I've been here before, but it's been about twelve months since the last time I was here. Uh, glad that Karen had the opportunity to provide this summary, uh, which she just gave me a copy of that kinda chronicles the meetings that we have attended for this application. I guess what I'll do is give you an update as to what's been going on since the last time we were here. Um, if you recall last June, um, at the planning board meeting, the uh seeker uh form was reviewed and accepted by the planning board, but then it had to go through a thirty day wait period, we've gotten through that, uh, the seeker has been um completed with the uh negative declaration. And we also had a couple of comments that we were working on from the engineering review. One was to get the Department of Health re uh issuance of the approval of the subdivision. Um, and we've been working on that. And the other was that is part, kind of part of the seeker and also from the engineering comments, um, was a request to update the wetland delineation um on the property. So, uh, we've done that. Um, I'll address the wetland part first, uh, there were wetlands flagged um in the uh, kinda north side of the property, um, kind of around the stream that goes under Call Street, uh, through through the through the parcel, through the parcels on the uh west side. And um, it turns out that the road alignment that we had uh was gonna get pretty close to some of those, and you know, we've we've been back and forth with the DEC and the Army Corps for several months now, starting with last summer when we had the um wetlands flagged. And um, and we we've got, we do have a wetland permit now, we've got a determination from the Army Corps that they are not requiring any permit, uh, because we've managed to modify the design in a way to not impact wetlands at all. Uh, but we are still within the buffer zone, we're doing work within the buffer zone, so the DEC still had to issue a permit. And through our coordination with them, uh, we had to change the alignment of the road a little bit, and uh, I'll.
Before you uh, before you get started real quick.
Yeah.
When I first took a tour of it, they had changed it already. But this is another change prior to that, cuz remember, the original plan was to go straight in and then you guys go off, so now this is a change beyond that.
It's a minor tweak from what we've previously presented to the planning board.
Okay.
Is what I would call it.
Okay.
Well, here's a previous. With uh the straight shot off of Call Street, straight down ninety degree bend. What we had to do was we shifted the where it meets Call Street by about fifteen feet only, and put this little bend in, and now we're now hugging this side of the property line. One thing we also did previously, lot eleven used to include this strip through here, which is completely useless and undevelopable, and didn't, wasn't necessary for the minimum lot size. Um, and I think we, I think we presented this to the planning board before, but in case I didn't, uh, that was one of the things, one of the minor modifications to the subdivision plan that were, um, that we'd like to implement. Um, it also would keep the uh storm, it's kind of necessary cuz the stormwater infrastructure is in there. Um, so, so we hugged the, that that line a little bit more now. Um, but the uh, uh, we were able to keep the uh road uh grade within the same parameters that we presented previously, so we're still, um, I think we're coming off of the Call Street at a three percent, and then we go to six percent, and then ten percent. Um, very similar to what we had presented before, um, which was a of a variance from the town code. So that allowed us to get the wetland permit. Um, are there any other questions on the wetland permit or the realignment of the road?
Now, this road, you said is really close to the boundary line, as I can see on our map.
Yep.
Right, is that gonna leave room for like the storm drainage and all that stuff that's supposed to?
Yeah, yeah, that all still functions, yep. So we also resubmitted everything to the Department of Health, and with the request that they reapproved the subdivision as um Gary Robinson? Uh, Gary Robinson was the previous engineer at the time back in two thousand nine, and so what we basically asked Department of Health is we're not changing any of the septic designs, we're just keeping Gary's septic design. And we're, we're keeping the property lines exactly they are, except for that, that minor um change that I told you about. Can you approve these plans? And we did a bit back and forth, they wanted to go back out to the site and see soils for themselves, so we did test pits uh with the Department of Health representatives there. We got, so we got additional, and we basically just confirmed that the soils are what we thought they are. Um, and they were just about ready to issue their approval, but we wanted to make sure we wrapped up all the wetland stuff first, to to make sure that there weren't gonna be any changes to the, to the subdivisions. So we've received the wetland permit, the plans are back in front of Department of Health, they're basically waiting to be signed by Kevin Kenyon, the uh engineer in in the Guns Falls office. Um, but we're basically been told that they're, they're done, they're approvable, we're just waiting for that stamp and signature, and then we'll, and then they'll get recorded uh in the county records. I think that's everything that I needed to update you all on. I, we didn't, we haven't changed the stormwater um design, and it's the same as before, um, where we have a much smaller, uh, you have two infiltration basins instead of one giant one at the end.
Yeah, I know at the, at the end and the call to sec. Is there, that's wetlands, correct?
No.
Well, I remember when I was there, there was water there.
What time of year was it?
Spring.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not sure, I just remember taking the tour and it wasn't a lot, but.
It holds water if the, if the soil is a little frozen, but other than that, it doesn't hold water at all.
And that's gonna be part of, well, I'm looking at the map. Yep, is it, is it part of uh lot nine or eight, or it looks like part of?
What, what we did is we, we adjusted those lot lines so that that would be part of the municipal right away.
Okay, so it's not part of the lot.
Right, so that, so if the town does take over the road, they will have full access to that stormwater infrastructure, it'll be part of the right away, so there won't, there won't need to be an easement or anything like that. And if the town does not choose to take over the road, then it'll be part of the association or whatever is established to 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 maintain that shared infrastructure.
So are you, you are willing to, uh, I know it's gotta go to the town, you're willing to go the twenty eight feet with the road, just as, you know, the town's, okay. What's probably gonna happen, what, what is going to have to happen, is gonna have to go in front of the town board for them to approve it, and and they're gonna need um, um, you can't say his name, he's have, was it, Ronnie's have to be there. Cuz I know there was certain specifications he wanted for the road, which I think you guys agreed to anyway, but.
Yeah, yeah, I think we've, we've um pretty much vetted those issues, we have presented to the town board once. Um, you know, it wasn't ready for final of the approval yet, so it was premature to have them approve anything at that time. Uh, but the plan would be to go back, um, once we uh get the site plan review parts of it um completed.
Okay.
Or subdivision part of it completed.
That, that's the important part as far as the road, go to the town board, which, if you follow his, what he wants.
Yep.
And the town's regulations, I think, will be fine, but.
Yep.
Well, we'll see, I can't speak for the town board.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we, we feel like that, based on our last meeting, we would expect them to approve it, but who, you know, we, we don't know that until, until the votes actually cast.
So does anybody, I mean, I know some of you weren't even on the board when we went through this last year.
Could you just explain why lot one and lot two are not for development?
Because of wetlands.
Okay.
Yep, and, and, and the DEC kinda reiterated in our coordination with them that they, that they cannot be developed.
I know we had discussed it, but like you said, there were several people here that.
I mean, I guess the wetlands weren't there, you know, before, and now they're there, but maybe they'll go away again, but I don't think it works that way.
So how many total building lots is this going to be?
Uh, nine.
Nine?
Nine?
Yeah, we have, we have eleven, eleven lots numbered, and one and two are not developable.
Okay, is one of those lots the road lot?
No, 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 the, 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 that's not a numbered lot.
Nine buildable lot.
Yeah, yeah, we anticipate the, the road part to become right away, so we didn't give it a lot number.
Is that the existing home there?
The existing home is on his own lot.
As one of those on building, building lot?
Yeah. Yep.
So actually, we, we're looking at eight to actually build on, cuz one.
True, yeah, one's already developed.
Number, do you know what number it is?
I.
Think it's eight.
Eight, eight.
But not positive.
Six.
Is it six?
Six.
Oh, yeah, there's the driveway.
Yep.
I remember when I was walking it, there was way.
Yeah, you can get turned around because the the driveway isn't where the road's gonna go, and so that's gonna need to be updated, I think it crosses over one of the other lots, but um, but that'll be fixed.
So I'm just going back for my notes. Are there nine more buildable lots or nine total, you'll have eight more that you can build, what is it?
Nine total.
And one is built.
One is built.
Okay.
So eight lots are currently empty and available for development.
I think if the town takes over that road, you have to deed it out with meets and bounds as kind of a lot for the town to take it over.
No problem.
Okay.
Um, Dara Land Surveying did all the surveying on here, and they've got all that, all the files on there.
I think they have to, I think it's now required that they have a, a, a deed basically for the road now on these.
Okay, that, they'll be able, uh, the surveyor will be able to create the um legal description.
Okay.
Um, if there's any other, if, if it needs to be deeded, might have to get your lawyer involved or something.
Right now, we're waiting on, don't really have a the town, obviously, and then um the paperwork missing, which is gonna be signed, but we don't have it in front of us, correct?
The Department of Health, yeah, I don't know if there's a path forward, since, since we know we're very close with Department of Health, I don't know if it's put uh, uh, an option to, to put forth a conditional approval. Um, the town, the town taking over the road, I mean, that shouldn't be contingent on the subdivision, because if, either the town will take it over and it'll become town infrastructure, or um the developers will be required to form an association to maintain that shared infrastructure. So it's kind of an either or thing, it doesn't, it won't change the lots or, you know, the fact that they'll be sold or developed or anything like that.
Anybody have any questions? So the minimal change was just on the road.
Yep.
Okay.
They wouldn't let us put even one square foot of fill in the, in the land. We tried.
So are we allowed to prove it?
The other question is, is it necessary, well, I guess it's up to the board, uh, as far as our engineer taking a look at it again, due to the minor road change at the beginning, you're, cuz nothing else has really changed.
Um, so I don't even think you need to put a condition on your approval if you don't want, because if you don't get sign off from that state agency, it's not happening either way.
Right, right.
So I think that you don't need to, if you don't want to, but you can also put a condition on it if you want. Um, and the city touched it on, oh, having an engineer look at that, that is a board choice.
That's, well, that's what I, I mean, there was a minimal change at the beginning in the road, there's.
Such a slight change.
I just wondered if it was required, but like you said, it was a board thing.
Does DOH have any regulation that the road and the stormwater has to be finished before you develop any of the house slots or anything?
No, they, they only really seem to be concerned about so well and septic, um, making sure that that's properly designed, um, and that the land can support it.
What is your plan to develop that road and stormwater system? I mean, are you planning to finish it before you sell the lots?
Yeah. Yeah. The infrastructure being, the asphalt may not be, may not be in before we start selling lots, that was depending whether or not the town takes over or not. But yeah, the infrastructure, the stormwater will be in, everything will be in, it will be down, bringing lots for selling.
No. I mean, it, it was made a slightly bit, it was made a slight bit longer because it has that little um curve in it, but it's, it's unsubstantial.
They did the same though, just kiss it over.
Yep.
And based on what I saw, you, you kinda had to do it, I mean, I mean.
We didn't have a choice to get the wetland permit.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So.
Is there anything else we should consider since they already have tax IDs for each of these lots that should be considered? You already have the tax ID. They're all individual, their numbers are.
Back in two thousand nine when the originally approved.
Yeah, this was already.
We should consider since they are already their own lots.
Yeah, the, uh, the owners have been paying taxes on all those individual lots all this time.
Very unusual.
This is a, they're making a change to the subdivision because of road, and they want to change the road, and now because of the wetlands, so they have an improved subdivision that now they're doing a modification to.
And basically, it was because of the, the wetland road as you, as you enter, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, so the Department of Health approval back in two thousand nine expired, cuz that has a five-year limit, so that's why we had to go through that again, and the town wasn't, we, the records were incomplete regarding the previous subdivision approval, so uh it was determined that we really needed to go through the process again.
I mean, it's technically subdivided.
It is, according to the county, it's subdivided.
So we're just basically approving. Right, that's good to see.
But they will have to file these changes with the county.
Well, yes, of course.
Yep.
Yeah.
But no, I don't think there's anything else for you to consider.
About the uh public hearing.
Okay.
Please. It's been open for a year and a half.
Caring before we make a motion to accept it.
Yes.
So if they make it, if they make a proposal to to accept it, are they accepting this as a preliminary plot, flat? Yes.
Yeah, that's the phase around, right?
Because the final one usually has all that stuff on the cover of it, DOH's approval and the dates and you know, I mean, the other one had a lot of stuff on the cover sheet of it.
I mean, the process, according to their subdivision regulations, is they have to approve the preliminary flat first. So as annoying as it might be to go through all of this, and that's just the steps we have to go through.
Okay, so uh if it's possible to approve the preliminary plan tonight, and then um by next month, we ought to have the final sign off from DOH anyway.
Are you planning on coming to the town board meeting this next month and asking them about the road again?
It's July second, I think, yes, only a week away, less than a week.
I um I think I have a, I think I have a Bolton Town Board meeting that night.
They do have another meeting before our, I believe it's the Tuesday, ours is gonna be on Tuesday next month. But the Tuesday before, they have their agenda meeting, I don't know if, if they can bring it in front of the agenda meeting.
It sounds like you're moving forward either way, so it doesn't sound like that's kind of sensitive in a way.
I think, yeah, another month on that won't, won't really change anything.
Right. Are you, you're gonna put, throw it in, whether it's.
We're gonna pull it as drawn, if they take it over, they take it over, they don't, we're gonna.
Whether you do or the town do, or pick it, right?
Yeah, at least getting this done will give them the opportunity to start getting some work done in there.
So we need to make the motion to close the public hearing? Okay, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We'll call it over.
Yes, please.
John?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Hearing none, the motion's carried.
So that's good.
Make a motion to approve the preliminary.
Yeah, I have no instructions here, but basically.
Make a motion to approve the preliminary flat. I make that motion.
My second.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Hearing none, the motion's carried.
Thank you, good luck.
How am I doing?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm doing talking, can you hear me?
So like I said, the, the town board meets Tuesday, and then they, they believe, uh.
Yeah, we won't, we won't be able to make it on July second, but uh we'll, we'll go to the August meeting.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, they, they have an agenda meeting if you really needed to go for our meeting, it's like the Tuesday.
Agenda meeting, um.
They don't discuss business.
Yeah, they don't usually.
Last time, yeah, last time we only attended the town board meeting, not the agenda.
So it'll be the first Tuesday in August for the town board.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
All right. Next on our agenda is a presentation by Thomas Welch regarding property owned by him and his brother Kevin Sumner.
Um, Mary would like to speak, John.
Okay.
So not to take the thunder out of your presentation, I just wanna make sure they're clear on why you're here. Um, so he's not really asking you to make any decisions tonight, he's presenting an issue, and he's basically asking if you think you would approve a boundary line adjustment in the end. He isn't asking for it tonight, he's presenting you with the issues, and then just seeing if it's worth him applying for a boundary line adjustment.
Yeah, we're looking, we're looking for a direction from the board. Good evening, I'm Tom Welch, um, my wife Sherry and I live on Terrace Drive Extension, uh, down at the southern end of the town. Uh, we live right next to my wife's brother Kevin and Fay Sumner, his wife. And Kevin and Fay's home encroaches on our property, um, about four inches, their building does. Over the years, because we're all family, it was no big deal. But now Kevin and Fay have decided to move to Argyle, so their home is on the market. Uh, I want the boundary line clarified, because if not, I don't think they'll, the new owners will be able to get clear title because they're encroaching on our property. Um, we've had uh Don Dara and his crew out to take a look at different solutions for this, and we're trying to do it without any kind of uh financial exchange of money, because we are family. If you um will look uh on the maps provided, um, you can see where his home encroaches on our property, and the proposal is, uh, over the years, he has built some infrastructure on our, our land, uh, a concrete sidewalk and such. And the proposal is, uh, we think it's, uh, a solution is to give up our building lot there that's vacant, and give him nine feet of our property that would resolve the encroachment issue of his building on our property. In exchange for that, um, the proposal is, uh, if you look at his property, uh, that borders Terrace Drive Extension, not Terrace Drive Extension, excuse me, Terrace Drive, um, it's uh behind each house uh on Terrace Drive Extension, there's a large hill that goes up to uh Terrace Drive. And each home on Terrace Drive Extension owns the land all the way up to Terrace Drive. It's in our, all of our deeds. So the proposal is for us to do another boundary line adjustment up where Kevin and Fay's property is on top of the hill on Terrace Drive, in exchange for the nine feet of waterfront property we're willing to give them. So that is what we're trying to get done, and we'd like some direction from the board as to whether you. So that is what we're trying to get done and we'd like some direction from the board as to whether you think. That's doable.
Can I make a couple of comments here?
Sure.
Um, these are all in the Hamlet Residential Zone, the setbacks. On this house that's over the property line. Is he has to have a minimum of ten feet on one side. And so. You were saying to give them nine feet isn't going to accomplish that ten feet minimum. Um you need to give them ten feet, four inches or.
I'm not gonna give him any more than nine feet because I have a dock that would come into jeopardy if I gave him ten feet. That's not gonna happen.
So you probably are going to have to file for a variance for that setback difference, or he is because it's, well, I don't know. It's, it's.
Well, so basically, if they give you the boundary line adjustment for what you're asking for. Whoever's, I'm sorry, I'm getting the parties mixed up, but whoever's house this is, it's getting the nine feet. Will be in violation of the zoning code at that point. So I mean, however.
They're already in violation of the zoning code.
They're not, since it's a prior non-conforming issue, but once you change the issue, it's no longer prior non-conforming, so. Whether they ask for variance or not, they will be in violation.
Okay.
So it's their choice, either the homeowner now or the homeowner to come, whether or not they seek a variance from the ZBA. They don't, they're in violation of the code.
Okay.
This new boundary line doesn't have to be a straight line, though, it's possible to have a jog in it to accomplish both. Preserving your dock as well as keeping a ten foot buffer.
That's an option. That's an option I didn't think of, thank you. Um I would not be opposed to that.
I mean, along those lines, you could jog it so much so you don't give up any of your water.
Cause you basically only need to cover that section there.
You only need to be able to maintain that ten foot of that side of the house, that's that's the issue. Just from the house.
So I have a question. Since his. The way the house is on the lot is. So could it be ten feet from the farthest point away from my property?
I don't, I don't really know what you're asking, let me.
No, every point of the house has.
The whole side of the house had to be at least ten feet from that property line.
Okay.
I will say that variance should not enter into your consideration, that is a consideration for the ZBA, not.
Does it need to be done before? No? So they can do the boundary line adjustment and it would be a violation? Okay, then um. Your intention is still to combine those two lots that you own into one?
Yes, I'm essentially giving up a building lot there.
You can, you can though put a condition on it. That the boundary line adjustment is only approved if the variance is granted.
Okay.
So if it's not, then that boundary line adjustment just goes away.
So what's happening on the other side of the road?
The.
To be clear.
The Sumner property. When he gets done, has to equal twenty thousand square feet in the HR zone or you're creating. Two nor, uh a a non-conforming lot, he's already conforming by about. Four thousand three hundred, almost four thousand four hundred feet, almost. So you can't make his lot non-conforming. Now. One of the things that Chris discovered today, if you look at this map that I gave you. Mister Sumner owns this triangle piece up here, I did it in orange so you can keep track of who owns what. It's possible that they could. Combine that lot into Mister Sumner's lot and however they end up. Trading off land. He still might end up with a conforming lot if you can configure it however it needs to be. But it should be twenty thousand square feet. Both your lot and his lot when you get done.
Okay. I I just don't understand what.
I mean, I can.
Deal is about a non-conforming lot, every house down there on the waterfront is on a non-conforming lot right now.
It's, it's because it's written in their subdivision rules that way and they have to abide by them.
So only this area right here where the house is, is what needs to. This right here is the house, correct? Right here? The yellow?
No.
It's.
No.
It's, it's this one, Tony, this, this one with the pink and yellow. The house.
This is the concrete pad that they're.
Yes, that's the corner of the house.
Right, so it's right here that has to come over nine feet, just this section right here, right?
Show the houses, the corner of the house, it's closest to the Hudson River.
So it's right here. How far is your house away from them, right here? Where's the.
This is Sumner's house.
Right, this is what needs to come up.
This needs, this cup needs to come nine feet, ten feet.
From the house.
From the house.
How far is this corner away?
I don't know, we don't have that.
And their house is ten feet away on the good side?
I don't know, no, their house is down here.
Right, this house right here, that's ten.
And they're gonna combine these two lots into one. The pink and the yellow lots are gonna get combined into one.
Isn't, where's the problem right here?
That's Mister Welch's.
And then this house right here.
Is the Summers.
So they're splitting this one down and.
They're not splitting that one, he's gonna come to put all of this minus whatever he gives him on there. Into this lot, this is all gonna all be one lot. Mister Sumner's lot. Is gonna be this and this plus a little bit from this one, but Mister Welch is wanting to gain. Some of this land into his lot, which is what's going to make. This lot non-conforming because the way you proposed it to me in the office was you were trying to gain quite a bit of that. Upper lot of his.
It's level up on top of the hill and right now there's some uh temporary storage buildings up there. So.
Who's garage is there?
That is your garage, correct?
I don't have a garage, there's a couple of sheds on my property, but no, on the vacant lot, but no.
As a garage with a roof, um yes.
Which one?
This is your sub, your um one that got. Surveyed, on your survey. The one with the sidewalk.
Alright, so this is the house that's into this.
That's the one that's.
Four inches, right.
Four inches.
So we're not, the concrete, all that stuff doesn't matter, he's just gotta be nine or ten feet from here.
To meet, to meet the regulations of the zoning code.
Yeah, that's not a garage, that's an eight by twelve foot shed.
Okay, it's listed as garage.
Yeah.
So who's taking possession of this one?
I'm thinking Mister Welch will, you know, you'll keep that shed on yours, correct?
Yes, that that shouldn't, that's farther than, that should be farther farther than 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 ten feet.
It's already existing non-conforming, so.
The lot, you're moving the line. Now you're changing uh.
Should you keep it ten feet from garage?
Right here, between the garage. What is that?
Boundary line, nine or ten feet, the shed's gonna be close to the line.
Yeah, but he wants to jog it up there, he wants to keep his dock where it is.
Yeah, but there's enough room off the dock.
Right here. When you do your boundary line adjustment, the the problem is here with the house, right? If you can do some. Kind of line. That jogs and gives him ten feet here, that's really all you need to fix this.
All the sidewalk area, he's gonna need, right?
Maybe, that's not part of the house, though, it's not.
It's only a little bit.
Right, but the the house is, here's the. The parking area is right here, if there's a sidewalk down to here, we don't want to touch it.
Yeah.
Steve, this is uh what Don just drew up. Today.
Right, that's what I said.
Goes with that house onto the property.
You could.
Yeah, he's already willing to give up.
Jog that line one more foot this way. And and just give him some of it, not all of it, you don't have to go from line to line.
Yeah, I understand that, my concern is up here. Um. My concern is he he has put infrastructure on there, a wide sidewalk. Like a six foot.
That's fine, but what I'm saying is. You, you're saying you don't wanna give him anymore, but. You could jog that line one. You've done it now to incorporate the sidewalk and the infrastructure, so here where the house is. You just need to jog it out one more foot. Or even eight inches, just so it comes to ten feet.
Eight inches.
And then that you can jog it back in.
Eight inches at the corner.
So that the whole side of that house has a ten foot. Lot line separation, that's what you need to create, just the side of that house.
So.
And all that stuff to incorporate.
You don't have to lose any.
Everything that goes.
Just do a rectangle.
And you go parallel to the side of the house, keep that, maintain that ten foot separation.
Or.
Jag it back in.
Yeah. Yeah.
What, but what do you think about that garage, should we keep the line ten feet from that?
Yes. I would.
And there's a timber wall there.
Is there enough room to do that?
There really isn't, not looking at this.
Once you shift the line.
It's, it's been there for.
The shed.
Since nineteen eighty-three.
So would you be willing to give him the garage also?
No.
Just a little rectangle, isn't it?
Because of his sidewalk, he's trying to give him the sidewalk that he's developed.
Yeah, give up the sidewalk.
And then you won't be smaller to walk to the garage.
But they're right, you have to do whatever it takes to create these ten feet separates uh setbacks.
If I were you, I'd work with an engineer, tell him what you wanna do, you want to keep the house. Ten feet away, just like she said, and see what they can drop, no, no other property other than that is what you're looking for, correct? Just so the house.
Then he wants whatever.
Have it draw it up and then.
Rectangle around the house.
Right.
Right.
Just around the house itself.
So basically.
Sidewalk gets torn up.
Want from above.
Well, you don't have to tear up.
No.
Sidewalk.
It's just part of its.
On his property.
Yeah.
He can do whatever he wants to that side.
That's true. But I'm saying, you don't have to, oh, it could be just left there, who cares?
Trying to fix this, he's still be able to go to a family room.
So what you need to do is whatever it takes to either get that ten foot separation for the garage and the house. And end up with lots that are at least twenty thousand square feet when you're done.
Cause even if we say based, if if we approve it with nine feet, depending, I I'm not sure if the zoning boards ever gonna approve that. So you're better off just doing it. The ten feet.
I know, there's no guarantee that.
I don't have a problem giving him ten feet, I really don't. Now you've brought up the issue is that I've gotta move. That shed, I don't know how I would move.
Cause you can cause it to stop long before it gets to the ten foot.
Just, just around the house.
Just do the rectangle around the house.
That's it. You don't have to move any other line, just around the house.
Just do a rectangle out ten foot.
Parking area in order to the timber wall, that house. That's part of my concern that.
What is that timber wall?
Where, where are you talking?
On, on your property where the, that shed is.
It says.
It says timber wall.
Is that retaining their driveway?
Oh, that's a. What he did was he laid a telephone pole down and then he raised it up with crushed stone. That's a non-issue, that can, that can go away.
You don't have to worry about ten foot from that.
Yeah, I, just like we were discussing, the easiest way is to get your engineer to see if it's feasible to. Just around the house itself, so you don't lose anything else.
And then it'd be.
And see, if you're happy with that, then you know, you come back in front of us for the boundary line.
Yeah, just the surveyor.
Or sir, yeah, I guess what I meant.
Well, I. What's, what's the process for a variance?
And they're the way.
Showing you my ignorance.
What's that?
The process for a variance is um you have to file paperwork, which I can give you, you have to provide plot plans. Showing these structures and what the setbacks are and right now. Um there aren't any dimensions for like how far that garage is from the property line. Um. I'm trying to think if that, let me look at this. Yeah, you've got point three feet encroachment, so this drawing that you have shows the encroachment. Um you'd have to have. A drawing for the planet, for the zoning board that shows. Where you want to move these lines and what the actual finished dimension would be, so they know what they're asking relief of. We also need um a map of neighboring properties, which we've basically got that already with this. And you're in the Adirondack Park there for a variance, you have to do a jurisdictional inquiry with the Adirondack Park. To see if they have jurisdiction over this or not and. It all depends on their interpretation as to whether you're creating more lots or not, whether they're gonna get involved, that's their thing, not my thing. We just looked for a letter from them, yes, you need a permit from them, no, you don't need a permit from them. And. Um. It's a hundred dollar fee, it's a two month process, the first month they review your application. They, if it's, if they accept it as complete, they set the date for the public hearing for the next month. And most times they make their decision that night, but they actually have up to sixty-two days. After they close the public hearing to make their decisions, it's a minimum of a two month process. And there's no guarantee that you'll get the variance either.
Okay.
Um. A boundary line adjustment, if you can just find a way to work with your brother and. And come up with just a boundary line adjustment that meets the zoning setbacks that we're talking about. You don't need a variance and you don't, even though APA recommends that you run it by them, it is not required that you run it by them. So it takes them out of the picture a bit, where on a variance it does not.
Okay.
Okay.
Take a minute to expand on that scenario of Mister Sumner combining that point one to the maker parcel to achieve. Forming lot in this boundary line.
Yeah, uh again.
Seems like the only boundary line, I guess, we are talking about here is the one for the house, right? You haven't proposed a second at this time.
Well. That'll be a package deal because I'm not gonna give him ten feet without anything in return.
So you, he, he, when, when you've both finish up. You need to have twenty thousand square feet. And he might have to attach that, combine that triangle that he already owns into that other lot to achieve that. That's something that the surveyor's gonna have to figure out.
Okay.
But it has, both lots have to end up being twenty thousand square feet when you're done. But it has, both lots have to end up being twenty thousand square feet when you're done.
Thanks for your time.
You could ask for a variance of that twenty thousand square feet as well. An area variance, that would be two variances you would be asking for. So think about it, talk it over with your brother and then make your decision, okay?
Hey, thanks for your time, I appreciate it. Tom, have fun at the family reunion.
Love to call that.
Thanks.
Hey, we have a bunch of minutes to approve.
Here.
Listen, this, we're all caught up after these, right? After this, these four.
Oh, okay.
Will be golden. We have the minutes, we have the minutes from May twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-three. Uh, August of twenty twenty-three, September twenty twenty-three. And then just last May of this year, twenty twenty-four. When we combine them all and, okay, anybody have? Any questions about the minutes and approval of them?
Nope.
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
No. On favor?
I.
Or who opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Alright, we also have, uh, any old and new business. The only thing I saw on the way up here is Guido's place, they're finally tearing that barn apart, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have not filed in my office for a permit yet. I talked to the county. And they said that, um. Bro, just tearing the sides off, they don't need a permit, but if they go too far, it may cause an issue, so we're, we're both trying to.
That's why it's wide open, like.
Yeah. Where is, where is? Guido's.
There's a barn.
Oh, okay, okay. Where you did the bed and breakfast with the wedding venue thing. Um. I don't, I don't, I can't remember if I received a final from APA on that or not, but anyway. Um. So yeah, they're.
Do they have to come back in front of us again?
They don't have to come back in front of us, but I have to issue permits for what, what they're gonna be doing. I have one thing.
Okay.
Um, I sent out emails um, regarding training. And again, I just, um, I have, three people have responded, Barb. Um, and one from the zoning. And Rose Alba. So, I just wanna reiterate that this training is available. You're not gonna be allowed to take the training online any longer. And right now on the planning board. Um. Kyle's not here and Josh isn't here. Francis, you need to get training somewhere.
Oh, really? Cause I thought I didn't need it last year.
Did you do two training? Two four hours trainings of last year?
I just did the one at the end of the year because I didn't need one for last year. Cause I wasn't even a member at that. Or I wasn't an alternate till this year.
He, he didn't become an alternate till January, that's right.
So and.
Mike was, but not Francis.
Okay, so I can carry yours over.
I'm just using the one in there, but you, if you want me to.
No, that's fine. I, I thought you were an alternate last year.
It was fun last year.
There's, there's another one, I think, up in, uh, Lake Placid.
I'm gonna check it. I'm just gonna check my records.
Okay. Chris driving?
Now, where we.
Alright, there we go.
What?
We'll do the one.
More hours are required per year.
That was fun.
So like, three. You only need one. One, but if I do all three, would, can I? You, your, your three excess will be grandfathered towards next year. You'll only need one, yeah. Yeah, carried over, not grandfathered.
Am I good?
You are good.
Okay, I'll go to more though, I like them.
Yeah.
They're interesting.
So.
There is, there is one.
At this point, I, I will try to remember to send another email to Kyle and to Josh because I'm gonna try and get those in soon. We've, we've had computer issues at work and it, just do anything is kind of an issue.
If, if, uh, I think Lake Placid hasn't went towards the end of the year again.
That's what this is.
Okay, if you wanna go and you've already got, met your requirements, is the town gonna pay for it?
It'll go to the next year.
It'll carry over.
Okay, I'll go to the one in.
Yeah.
We're all gonna go.
Do you need the date?
That would be a good idea.
As long as you tell me, I'll make it.
It's September twenty-sixth.
Yep. Alright, I'm gonna.
I'm going to the one in Goshen. September twelfth.
Orange County.
I don't, I haven't, also.
Planning board's the twenty-fifth.
We don't have to rush back this.
That was so funny. Are you gonna do it again?
Yeah, yeah, well, I'll do it as a road trip.
I gotta sign you up.
Do I need to sign up or are you excited?
Are you going to do it again?
Yeah, it was fun.
And we'll come back with extra cookies. Remember that for stacking up on cookies?
Yes. They were good.
You went to.
I did.
There were three in the back.
Our car can fit five uncomfortably.
That's how it went last year, right?
Our car fits five uncomfortably.
So it was okay.
Alright, so I'm gonna do Francis, Chris, Tony, Rose Alba. And Barb. Barb, you're going to a different one.
I don't know yet.
Oh, John wants to go.
I want to, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
Let me know.
Okay.
Here in the Saratoga one from the January, that's.
That covered you.
For the year, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll, I'll wait till next year.
You can have fun with the cookie wrap.
No.
That's all I have at this point.
Okay, anybody else old and new business? Anybody? So I make a motion with adjourned.
Okay.
Second.
On favor?